The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. The first thing on our agenda is the establishment of a quorum. All members are present, so therefore we do have a quorum. Board members, we've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I still move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. We have the approval of the minutes. Board members, we've all had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the May 19, 2020 minutes?
I still move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda, we have the approving of the minutes for June 2nd, 2020. Is there a motion?
That's a good correction that Dr. Seaback inserted.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve the June 2nd minutes with the approval of the amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved and Mr. Figus has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And now we have gotten to the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Good evening, Attorney Johnson, President Johnson, board members, all of the JPS team members and community members who gathered with us here virtually. At this time, we'll have a video presentation with the latest district news and important updates from our instructional television production team.
The Jackson Public Schools Child Nutrition Department is offering its summer food service program from June 1st through July 10th. Grab and go breakfast and lunch meals will be served from 11:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Please visit our website for the locations of service. Meals are free for children 18 years of age and under. Adult meals are $2.50 for breakfast and $3.75 for lunch. Congratulations to recent Murrah High School graduate and Murrah Hall of Fame inductee, Mackenzie Williams. Mackenzie, who graduated in the top 6% of her class, is a Silver Key winner of the 2019 Mississippi Scholastic Arts and Writing Award. Her essay, Connecting Knowledge: When the Educator Becomes the Oppressor, marked Williams' first-ever submission to the contest. She won the Golden Key Award later that same year. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards have recognized the vision, ingenuity, and talent of our nation's youth since 1923 and provided opportunities for creative teens to be celebrated for their talents. Mackenzie plans to attend Jackson State University to study speech pathology in the fall. The Jackson Public Schools Summer Reading Program is underway. All JPS scholars are required to read at least three books this summer and to complete a log for each. Please visit our website to see the complete list of required books and for instructions about downloading summer reading logs and reading guides. Links to search for the audiobook version of summer reading books are also available. Please note, there may be a charge to download or access audiobooks and that not all summer reading books may be available in audio format. Jackson Public Schools is proud to announce five new leaders to take the helm as principals at our schools for the 2021 school year. They are Linda Murray, former award-winning principal of Bar Elementary School and the 2018-2019 Administrator of the Year. She will take over as Educational Leader at Galloway Elementary School. Shereeka Dixon, who previously served as an Assistant Principal at John Hopkins Elementary. She'll lead McLeod Elementary School. Terrence Hill, previous Assistant Principal at Pecan Park Elementary, was appointed as the new principal at Green Elementary School. Tantanisha Houston, former Assistant Principal at Boyd and Sykes Elementary Schools, will head Sykes Elementary School. And Mrs. Ruthie Johnson, who previously served as an Assistant Principal at Kirksey Middle School, will now take the lead as its new principal. Congratulations to these fantastic instructional leaders. Registration is now underway for returning and new students to the Jackson Public Schools. Parents and legal guardians of returning students can complete registration in the JPS Active Parent Portal. Visit our website and click on the school registration link. New student registration will take place June 10th through July 15th, 2020, at the Poindexter Administrative Complex located at 1017 Robinson Street. Parents and legal guardians should contact the Office of Enrollment Services at 601-960-8850 to make an appointment and to receive next step instructions. A listing of all the required documentation is posted on our website at the school registration link. Jackson Public Schools Campus Enforcement Officer Jerry Green is the Metro Top Cop for 2020. The honor was bestowed upon Officer Green by Mississippi Supreme Court Justice T. Kenneth Griffiths, Jr. Congratulations, Officer Green, and thank you for your service. Eighty JPS employees will be retiring at the end of the 2020 school year. We value the contributions each of our retirees has made in advancing our mission of transforming lives through excellent education. While our usual retirement send-off celebration had to be canceled this year, we want to salute these 10 members and bid them a fond farewell as they embark on the next phase of their life's journey. Congratulations, colleagues, and thank you for committing your gifts, talents, skills, and energy to serve the children and families of Jackson Public Schools. To view a video salute to our retirees from our superintendent, please visit our YouTube channel. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, follow us on Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, or learn more about our district's coronavirus response, please visit jackson.k12.ms.us/coronavirusresponse. You may contact us with your COVID-19-related questions at covid19@jackson.k12.ms.us.
As always, I want to thank the instructional television team and Dr. Cormac and all of those who helped to make the highlights real, such a high-quality presentation of the numerous highlights from the past week and just over time here in Jackson Public Schools. Want to reiterate just our huge thanks and undying gratitude, really, for all of our retirees. It's pretty amazing to have worked and served and given over your time and your career over time and to get to the point where you've earned your retirement. And I know some board members have reached that as well. Just want to thank all of our retirees and again, say again, we are disappointed that we didn't have the time or weren't able to engage with them in person, given our restrictions on social gatherings and that. And to know that we've got 80 of our team members who are retiring this year, we will miss them, but we do thank them and wish them all the best as they take on or move into this next phase of their lives. Many of them considering some next position or role, and many of them also looking at opportunities to garden and take care of the front porch and ice tea and all those beautiful things, too. So, we just, we can't say enough about our retirees, how much we love and we'll miss them. Board members, I'd, we shared the news about our two new senior team members, executive team members previously. Mr. Joseph Albright, who's our new Chief Operating Officer, and Dr. Jose Salgado, who's our new Chief Academic Officer. And although they officially started on their official contract July 1, we were able to bring them on on short-term contracts to support in our planning for next year, and they are with us this evening. So, I do want to acknowledge both Mr. Albright and Dr. Salgado and give them just a second, 30 seconds, to say hello to you, since they are with us on the call tonight. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Dr. Green, and thank you, thank you, Board, for your confidence in the selection. I am really excited about being a part of the Jackson School System, the Jackson Family. We've already made significant introductions, put some innovations into place that I think not only will make it safer and healthier for our scholars this coming year, but will also help us really improve our performance overall in operations, provide better service to the academic side, and become more a part of the overall vision and mission of Jackson Public Schools. So, again, thank you for your confidence, and I look forward to working with you as well as the rest of the Jackson Public School family.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. Dr. Salgado?
Good afternoon. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the children and families of Jackson Public Schools. Now, since I arrived last week, I have been welcomed more than I could ever imagine, and I already feel part of the Jackson Family and already working really hard with a fantastic team. And we are, our commitment is that quality instruction will continue for every child, regardless of how we end up providing that instruction, the online or physical. We will bend ourselves backwards to provide the best education possible for the kids, and I'm thankful to have inherited such a wonderful team of people, and thank you very much. Wonderful to be here.
We're excited to have you both, and thank you again for availing yourselves even before your official July 1 start, knowing that we've got such big work to do at this time. Board members, it's, it has been, geez, it's been 11 months since we launched our strategic plan, Excellence for All. In some ways, it feels like much longer, and in other ways, not as much. And this plan reflects our need to lay a strong foundation while maintaining the flexibility to innovate. It speaks both to our aspirations to provide better service to scholars and families through our key commitments. And as we continue to make progress on the plan, we're committed to keeping parents and scholars and community supporters informed about our progress and those areas of growth that remain. At this time, I'll invite our Chief of Staff, Dr. Michael Cormac, to share some updates and to present those updates on our strategic plan. Dr. Cormac?
Thank you. Good evening to Board President Johnson, to Dr. Green, and members of the Board of Trustees. Tonight, I'll provide a biannual update on the implementation of the Jackson Public Schools Strategic Plan, Excellence for All. So, as you'll recall, and as Dr. Green just mentioned, about 11 months ago today, we launched our five-year strategic plan. Our superintendent and this board ratified our six core values of excellence, equity, growth mindset, relationships, relevance, and a positive and respectful culture. Additionally, we set out to achieve ambitious five-year goals and metrics and laid out five key commitments, which I'll speak to tonight. Finally, we also signaled the, to the community, our markers for successful scholars in our system with our profile for a JPS graduate. In order to achieve the goals in this plan, Dr. Green designated five Commitment Champions to serve as quarterbacks, as he terms us, for the implementation of each of the commitments. They are Dr. William Merritt, who leads Commitment 1, a strong start, and he serves as Assistant Superintendent for School Support in the office and over the office of state and federal programs. Dr. Kimberly Smith, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, supports the implementation of Commitment 2, Innovative Teaching and Learning. Yours truly, I'm leading Commitment Number 3, Talented and Empowered Teams. For Commitment 4, we have Ms. Amanda Thomas, who is our Executive Director of Climate and Wellness. And finally, for Commitment 5, we have Dr. Nicole Charleston, who serves as our Executive Director of Data and Accountability. And so, taken together, these are our Commitment Champions who have direct oversight and quarterback our commitments. This evening, our objectives are as follows. I want to summarize the progress that's been made to date in implementing our strategic plan, Excellence for All. Describe our next steps in planning, data collection, and phasing the work related to each commitment. And finally, I want to explore more deeply some progress that's been made in the area of Commitment 4, Joyful Learning Environments, which, again, is led by Ms. Amanda Thomas. First, let's begin with the data. The data is critical to the implementation of our strategic plan, and we set out some very ambitious five-year goals. To assist with the staging of that work, Dr. Nicole Charleston in Data and Accountability helped us to set annual goals and targets that would be both ambitious and feasible. So, I want to lay out some of the goals that are listed in our strategic plan and where we stand to date. So, first off, we set out with an ambitious goal to provide all scholars with access to high-quality JPS pre-kindergarten experiences. In setting that goal, we benchmarked that in school year 1718 with 580 available seats for pre-kindergarten in the district. This year, we expanded that by an additional classroom, offering approximately 600 seats for pre-kindergarten this year. Our phased goal for this year, at the end of year, was to create a total of 780 seats. So, in total, we would have 780 seats. Our current status with the creation and implementation of optimizing for equity and with the expansion of pre-kindergarten at McWillie in our North Zone and Van Winkle in the South, we'll be able to grow pre-kindergarten access in Jackson Public Schools to 960 seats for the fall. So, we have exceeded that goal, and we're very excited about what that will mean for our pre-kindergarten scholars. Our second goal here in the strategic plan was for 40% or more of JPS scholars to perform proficiently in reading across grades 3 through 8 and in English 2. Our benchmark set for the plan in 1718 was for, at, was set at 24.7%, which corresponds to the performance on the MAP test, which is our state assessment. At the end of last year, 27.1% of scholars were able to read and perform proficiently in reading in English 2, and our goal for the end of year this year was 30%. Of course, due to COVID-19 and the suspension of statewide testing, we were not able to have that opportunity to, for our scholars to assess on the MAP test at the end of this year. However, for the purposes of this presentation, to give us a proxy for that, we do have our third benchmark results, which were taken in the final week of February and beginning week in March prior to spring break and our COVID closure. And on that, when we roll up the data, 27.2% of our scholars were performing proficiently in reading and English 2, and that's without the final quarter of instruction. So, we believe quite strongly that we would have been able to achieve that year-end goal of at least 30% of scholars reading proficiently by the end of the year. For mathematics, our goal was 40% or more of JPS scholars performing proficiently in mathematics across grades 3 through 8 and in algebra. Our benchmark for 1718 at the creation of the plan was 19.7%. That grew to 23.8% at the end of last year, and our goal for this year was 27%. We're very excited to share that, based on the third benchmark results, our scholars achieved 31.3% far in excess, smashing the end-of-year goal that we had set and giving us great pride that with an additional nine weeks of instruction, they would have been able to do even better. So, we're very excited about that and what that will mean for instruction in the fall. With regard to ACT performance, which is our next goal, we set an ambitious goal of 21 or more composite score on the ACT. Our benchmark in 1718, that school year, was 15.6 as a composite score. Last year, at the end of last year, when all things were tallied based on the 11th-grade state-mandated ACT test, that's the state administration, our composite, our average composite score was 15. We have tracked and phased a goal for this year to perform at a 17, and our current status based on that statewide administration was a 15.6. So, we're back to our benchmark. We've got some work ahead, but we have a strong high school division that's working collaboratively to get us on track. With regard to graduation, based on our dropout prevention and graduation plans, we've set a target that by the 2024 school year, we will have 80% or more of JPS scholars graduating in four years. Our benchmark was 71% in school year 1718. Last year, 74.5% of our scholars graduated in four years, and our goal for this year was 76%. Again, this is a lagging indicator, so this represents the cohort from the prior year, and we achieved 75%. So, steady progress from the previous cohort, not quite at the goal that we had set, but keeps us on pace with our goals for the 2024 year. Our next goal is 10% or fewer scholars suspended per school year. Our benchmark was 19.7% of scholars that had a suspension. Then, at the end of last year, that grew some to 23.8%. And our goal for this year was an ambitious 12%. At the time before the COVID closure, 11.5% of scholars had been suspended at that point. So, you could see that we were tracking toward our goal, and some of the very rigorous measures that were put in place under climate and wellness in support and in collaboration with our school leaders has really helped this effort. And I'll speak more to that in, as we address the work that has been done connected to Commitment 4. Our next goal is around decreasing chronic absenteeism to more, to no more than 20% of JPS scholars. Again, our benchmark was 22% in 1718. It declined last year to 21%, and our goal this year was 20%. You could see that we've made some very positive gains in that direction, obviously with the caveat that we closed schools after spring break, and so we were at 13.3%. Important to note here that the definition of chronic absenteeism is very helpful in understanding this metric, and we define chronic absenteeism as missing 10% or more of the academic year, including excused and unexcused absence. So, based on 180-day school year, which we were intending to do, that would mean a student misses 18 or more days or no more than 18 or more days, those students that do fit the chronic absenteeism bill. Based on our closure following spring break, this would mean approximately 13 and a half days. And so, it is a reliable indicator because at any point in time, that percentage is a helpful indicator, and it's based on where you are in that present school year. So, we believe that it was completely feasible for us to have achieved our year-end goal and to actually have substantially decreased chronic absenteeism. This is a helpful measure because students can't learn if they're not in school. Additionally, as you all know, in our budget conversations, students' average daily attendance is tied to our funding formula. So, it's very important that students be present so that they can learn and that they are accounted for because we need to provide them an excellent education. So, this slide just reminds us of the setup and layout of our implementation tables for the strategic plan. Listed below each commitment are the key initiatives and a guide for each year. So, based on this year's implementation of the strategic plan, I'll provide the following reminders. You'll note that below each key initiative is an implementation table, and the letters and color coding denote, the P denotes planning. So, a P would let you know that we are in the planning phase of the work, and I denotes implementation, and an R is noted for refinement. So, for example, this year, with regard to the development of a parent academy, we were in the planning phase but look to implement parent academies in connection with our strong-start commitment for the fall. Connected to Commitment 1, our Optimizing for Equity Plan, as I've mentioned, helps us to expand and to realize this opportunity to expand JPS pre-kindergarten by 380 seats this fall. Additionally, we have collaboration that is underway with Hines County Human Resource Center and a draft MOU, which is being finalized in partnership with our Elementary Assistant Superintendents and the Office of Federal Programs. Connected to Commitment 2, our Optimizing for Equity Plan endeavors to repurpose our Rowan Middle School Building as a world-class, district-wide center for teaching and learning, and we've had some great conversations with some national philanthropies with regard to funding and the amplification of our teaching and learning model in the district. We've also selected, and we're in year one of implementation, of some new standard-aligned curriculum, Witten Wisdom, for K-5 ELA, and Ready Math as our K-8 math adoption. Additionally, our Office of Teaching and Learning has been very nimble during our COVID closure and is supporting our district's transition to remote learning, including the use of instructional television on our YouTube and Comcast Network channels 18 and 19. And here we have a collection of some of our staff members and many others who contributed to read alouds and other instructional videos to keep our students sharp during the closure. With connection to our Commitment 3, Talented and Empowered Teams, this year we've adopted a Grow Your Own initiative and really looked at our vacancies and our critical teacher vacancies in elementary, special education, and mathematics. We presently are drafting an RFP for additional university partnerships so that we can realize additional teacher certifications that would be enhanced during this period of the praxis being waived for initial teacher licensure. Additionally, we piloted several initiatives with the Calhoun Foundation and in partnership with the Mississippi Department of Education, including our Mississippi Teacher Residency and Performance-Based Licensor Tracks. And that's really paying dividends in growing our own, the Mississippi Teacher Residency, which is a program that allows assistant teachers with an associate's degree to get the additional two years of their program, their undergraduate program, with a tuition-free program that we sponsor in partnership with the Calhoun Foundation. I'm also very excited that in response to COVID, we have hosted our first-ever virtual hiring chats to support teacher and staff recruitment. We've hosted two so far, and we have another virtual hiring opportunity, which we will sponsor for operations departments, so school bus drivers, child nutrition workers, and those working to support the implementation of technology. And now, a deep dive into Commitment 4, which is our Joyful Learning Environments Commitment. With this initiative, we have focused on engaging families to support scholars' well-being and development. And so far, we've implemented a number of family workshops, including science, project planning for parents, reading fair supports, an MVP McKinney Bendow Program, homeless seminar, and additionally, family financial nights. We are looking to plan additional workshops for families, and our Partners in Education Office has been instrumental in surveying parents to get a better sense of their needs for additional supports. In connection with Initiative 2, which is to develop an accountability model for school climate and wellness, presently, the thing that I want to single out this evening is Presently, the thing that I want to single out this evening is that we have an RFP in place. One of the goals that was not highlighted in my initial review of the metrics is a school-wide composite score looking at students and parents' relationships and views of their, their child's school. And so we are currently developing an RFP that will go live this summer so that we can adopt and benchmark a score that looks holistically at the school culture and environment so that we'll be able to benchmark that and measure progress and growth. So that in addition to our schools meeting students' academic needs, we also know that they need to be climates that are welcoming, safe and joyful. With initiative three of our commitment four, this focuses on fostering relationships between scholars and caring adults. And within Partners in Education, they've assisted in building mentorship opportunities for our volunteers and speakers connected to each school. Additionally, our new teacher induction team, which sits under the Office of Teaching and Learning, conducted a training on building these positive relationships. We know that the teacher and student relationship is really integral to student success. And so those supports are important for all teachers, but especially important for our beginning educators in Jackson Public Schools. Additionally, a module was developed to support new teachers around their scholars' social and emotional needs. And in the coming slides, I'll address some of the work that we're doing around SEL or social emotional learning. We've implemented a plan for the next two years that has been designed and we're working with the Inside Education Group and other partners to further invest our leaders and teachers in the work of social and emotional learning. In fact, our Leadership Institute in June, just two weeks ago, really focused on the integral role that social and emotional learning plays in all learning. In the planning phase for the upcoming year, we've identified champion schools to increase the support for these initiatives. And those will include Blackburn, Cardozo and Dawson Elementary Schools. These partnerships are strategic because, as you know, with our optimizing for equity plan, we have consolidated two of these middle schools into Blackburn and Cardozo. And so the increased intention around social emotional learning will be important as certain scholars will be becoming part and building a holistic school culture together. And then this slide just basically amplifies the particular model that we're using to uplift social and emotional learning. It's the Castle Framework, which focus on self-awareness and self-management skills as well as social awareness and relationship skills, which all lead into responsible decision-making. And so this overarching framework is the framework that undergoes many social and emotional learning frameworks and also the work that we're doing within the district. Finally, with the final key initiative, living into experiences that are fun and deeply engaging for scholars. Here are a few of the opportunities that we've been able to uplift this year, including expanded extracurricular activities such as robotics and coding and a focus on STEM. And we're looking in the name of equity to expand these opportunities for more middle school scholars. Additionally, we're in the planning phase of expanding out-of-school learning experiences for all scholars and will be developing an RFP to really live into our Twenty First Century Grant funding opportunities to make certain that our classrooms are places that are fun and deeply engaging, but that in addition to classroom experiences, there are opportunities to expand the learning beyond the classroom. Our final commitment of the strategic plan is a focus on a culture of accountability and excellence. And again, this work is led by Dr. Nicole Charleston. This year, we focused on operational responsiveness to our scholars and their families and have focused that work around three key initiatives. First, really thinking more deeply about how we can improve our operational responsiveness around enrollment and registration, transportation and textbook processes. Under enrollment and registration, we've revised and simplified our affidavit residency process. It used to be that parents would have to come to Point Dexter to complete that affidavit residency process. We've now made that form available online, which can be notarized and then brought back, which helps to reduce the lines and the wait times. And then also just helps to improve the, the amount of convenience for families that are registering. Additionally, we provided seamless service to our families that are facing housing insecurity. And as this board has been presented with before in our deeper dive on addressing homelessness in the district, our homeless liaison is doing fantastic work to make certain that this process is also seamless for these scholars that are facing housing insecurity. Additionally, we've completed a more robust spring enrollment cycle. So with the COVID closure, we didn't miss that opportunity to register scholars online. And so that process for returning scholars is now fully online. And because of the feedback that was shared by school superintendents around the state, this year, the Mississippi Department of Education in coordination with our state auditor's office has relaxed the two proofs of residency for returning students at the same address, which we believe has really enhanced our numbers of students that are registered at this point over last year. With transportation, we have committed to create a mobile app to provide route information, location and push alerts for communications with families. And our team just recently settled in a collaborative process on the app vendor, which will allow parents from their smartphone to get the latest updates, to connect with us on Facebook, Twitter, and other social media outlets, but also to get push notifications from the TransAct system, which is one of the systems that we use for our transportation routes. And then finally, with our textbook process, we continue to think about ways that we can modernize our inventory process. And we piloted a number of electronic textbook offerings, which is very exciting, especially in response to COVID closure and specifically wanting to plan around online learning and other offerings. So to catalyze and to summarize our key takeaways for this evening with regard to the strategic plan, we're working purposely as a team to fulfill the commitments that were made in our Excellence for All strategic plan. And though we were faced with a once-in-a-generation global pandemic and will continue to wrestle with that in the year ahead, we've made steady progress before, during and after our COVID closure. Additionally, we want to share that we are on track with a variety of our plans, academic, behavioral and attendance benchmarks. You could see even just three non-weeks periods in, we were making significant progress and really do believe that we were going to be able to live into our year-end goals. And our efforts to strengthen the early grades, specifically with a strong start commitment and expansion of pre-kindergarten will only shore up our success later in the middle and high school grades. With that, that brings me to the conclusion of this presentation. I welcome any questions that the board may have.
I don't have a question, Dr. Karmack, and thank you for the presentation. But I'm excited at what we were able to do in three nine weeks. Congratulations to the administration. Excellent. This is great.
President Johnson, I'd just like to affirm your remarks to say that I was particularly pleased to see the accountability model for social culture. School culture, Kenny Ream, Hannah Rennie, for school culture. I know that's been a concern for school boards for terms prior to this board. And to see that identified and really addressed is very, very heartening, as well as the work around social emotional learning that's so important to our children, especially at this time. So thank you all so much. I know the team is working together collaboratively and I just love how it all ties together by strategic plans. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I would also just echo congratulations and thanks for all the work that's gone into it. I, I reference this document frequently when I'm, whether I'm speaking about school board duties or, or my connection to this work. And even just last week, some of the information that you shared tonight, I was able to share with the members of city council. And the ease that which with it is organized, and of course, also the progress makes those conversations invigorating, interesting, engaged. And so again, thank you for all of that. I have one question and one comment. As you know, I'm always looking at the data. On the ACT indicator, are there elements of the ACT where, that we've identified where we need to zero in on more intentionally? Are there differences or they uniform across the board?
So there are certainly differences. What we've settled the goal on is, is in the composite score. We'd be happy to come back with a more focused presentation just on ACT performance, as was suggested by our Council for Great City Schools partner, because I think many of the efforts of our high school division could really highlight it there. But of course, the disaggregation of that data is one of the ways that we're going to be able to really make traction and continue that work forward. As I've mentioned to the board in the past, one of the ways that we've identified is to make certain that students are more familiar with the ACT exam prior to high school entry. And so our eighth graders have engaged in a praxis, our practice exam, which gives them an opportunity to get a composite score and to learn a little bit about the aspects of the exam in a mock-up so that they can begin to set some discernible targets. But we will mark this down and certainly come back with a more robust presentation simply on that ACT goal.
No, that's great. And then on the comment side, the joyful learning environments, that was great to see all of the initiatives that are underway and obviously a ton of work that is involved in there. At the risk of proposing another initiative, I just want to name the moment of transition from elementary to middle school and middle to high school as an opportunity for all of us. I think there is an opportunity to engage parents, students, guardians at those moments to continue to build on momentum from, it was built in the previous school to welcome them into the new school. And I only name it here because I know that's what gets measured is what is managed. And so again, that's just something I'd like to name here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for reminding us of that, Dr. Sevack.
And, and, and the reality is the, the supports surround social emotional learning expectations for students, just the experiences that young people will have moving into middle school, moving into high school. Those are different. And so I like to say we need to use our turn signals and, and help young people as well as their parents to understand how they, what they can expect as they make those transitions. And it's, I mean, we'll talk a bit later about policing and campus enforcement, but you know, long before we get to a place where we're having to react to bad behaviors or behaviors that are outside of the expectations, we absolutely want to set everyone up for success. And, and those kinds of things, what you're suggesting, support that. So absolutely, I, I can tell you just quickly that Dr. Murray for our, our middle schools and Mrs. Marshall Thomas already thinking about some initial steps in developing a more coordinated, more thoughtful approach to those transitions and will likely continue to gather information and work collaboratively with the school leaders to, to make sure that, that those are robust efforts and, and programs actually, not just, you know, a couple of actions that we do to, to mark the, the transitions.
Dr. Green, I have two questions quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we were forced to close, there was some discussion of making particular effort to bring the families of our scholars of our schools that were being merged. I, I hope that's still on the, on the front burner.
Yes, ma'am. I, I can actually pitch it to Dr. Murray to, to talk a little bit about what even in the midst of the distancing and virtual kind of exchanges.
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Sevack. We are planning to have an orientation-type program over a few days, inviting those students and bringing those two populations together. So we are planning, I'm working with the principals and we're, we're putting some things in place to make that happen. And hopefully it'll be face-to-face, but if not, we'll have a virtual process in place.
Thank you. I'm confident with you at the helm. It will be successful because I heard your remarks at that night at Blackburn. You really helped put parents at ease with your response to their question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My other question is, Dr. Karmack, will we have access to this presentation? Because my community meeting meets by Zoom now and I'd love to share this update. Or is this too much detail or can we circulate this?
Yes, ma'am. You can feel free to circulate this. We are recording each of these board meetings and if you would like, we can excerpt the video clip and it can be shown directly or the PowerPoint can be shared with you so that you can share it directly with community members.
Great.
Want to make certain that, that folks are aware of the positive progress that has been made and our areas for growth. We want to be really transparent about that and their, their level of engagement in, in that work is, is vital.
Great. Thank you. I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, President Johnson, and I would agree and echo what everyone else said. Congratulations. What an amazing job. And it's just so affirming to see all of, all of the planning and all of the hard work coming together. So congratulations to everybody and thank you for all that you're doing. I'd echo one thing Dr. Sevack said, and that's just seeing some more of the disaggregated data. For instance, I, I am so excited to see the math data. But I wonder, are we achieving at higher rates and certain levels? And maybe algebra, eighth grade algebra isn't what we want it to be. And so I would, I would just like to see some of the disaggregated data at some point so that we can kind of understand where we are overall. And of course, kind of the nagging thing in the back of probably all of our minds is, what did we lose being out of school for the last three months? And are we, are we thinking, are we planning about how we reset and how we, we gain back the time that was lost in the classroom in front of our children? And whether or not we actually have to think about resetting some of our, our goals for year in, year out achievement. Because this is obviously going to set us back.
Right. So those are some, some very important questions. We do have access to the disaggregated data. In fact, the data that Dr. Sevack referenced has the cuts by grade level. In the, at the level of the strategic plan, of course, we blew those up to look across the system, but we can certainly share the disaggregation by each grade level that's assessed, three through eight and then in high school. And that will kind of help to provide the picture. Additionally, as part of that disaggregation, we provide for you the scores on the pre-assessments and the post-assessments. So you can get a sense of how much of that growth was accomplished during the year. And it can be quite helpful just kind of in building a picture for the real work that our teachers and principals and district-level leaders have done to help and our scholars and families, of course, have done to help to move the, the needle for achievement. Of course, our conversations day to day are all about how we plan for a strong start. And of course, we are looking at ways and strategies to adequately assess any learning loss that's occurred. And we are anticipating some learning loss, but we're also planning really robust structures to try to get students up to speed. One of the benefits of our Mississippi College and Career Readiness Standards is that they are cyclical, both for math and for English Language Arts. So the reality is if I'm a fourth grader in JPS and I missed the third, this fourth nine weeks, I need to start in those fourth grade standards and there's opportunities to catch me up as I work through grade level content. So that is one value of the particular standards that we've adopted. We know that it's going to be tough and challenging, but we are constantly looking at strategies to make certain that students can pick up and it will involve some reassessment. So I think we'll have a stronger sense of what our new strategies and what our new normal will need to be once we have a firmer picture based on our beginning-of-year diagnostics to get a picture of the plan ahead. But we can already begin to do some of the planning because as you know, students students are going to have lost some ground, and we can anticipate that, but we'll be working really aggressively to arrest that.
And just to to add to Dr. Cormac's comment, the one of our non-negotiables with the within the instructional team is actually planning for the that break in instruction. And so building on, so we've got to be careful not to spend the first, call it the first term, going back to last year, right? Because we'll never catch up. And so in the planning is a contemplation of who who did we know even coming out of the third term was struggling? And so what, how do we plan for what we knew coming out of the third term this past year for those who are already struggling? How do we plan around their interventions and supports for them? And how do we ensure that the planning as we launch into the new year and the new curricular materials and standards for the next grade level? How do we embed in that the reteaching or the pre-teaching of of skills or concepts that might need to be done? It's it's a pretty nuanced approach, but frankly, it's it's not completely different from what is expected anyway of teachers. Now we just have a situation that requires it even more so because there was this gap of of time lost. But yeah, that's something that our instructional team is is already working, both the internal team as well as with our partners, our curriculum partners to to support our planning so that we're working with all of that in mind.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah, I I don't, and let me be clear, I'm not intending to make this seem like a simple thing. Big, because it is not, it is not. I do just want to acknowledge that the team, that is one of the non-negotiables that is built into the planning as we as we march towards the fall. Other question, Doc, you had something else you want to share? Cormac?
No, sir.
Other questions or comments with regard to the the updates on our strategic plan? Well, I I do want to thank you, Dr. Cormac, for this presentation, all of the the sponsors, the quarterbacks of the the strategic plan commitments. It's a it's a huge body of work that these folks are taking on and and kind of managing and coordinating with several partners to move the work along. Board members, I hope that you'd agree that we're well on our way to delivering on the commitments that we've made in the strategic plan. I just had a note, Ms. Hilliard, were you?
I was talking.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I was tempted to say something, and I was not. I was talking, but I was not, I was on mute and everything. But I I just wanted to say that, for me, that I found this report quite interesting as I looked at some of the things that we've been, are you hearing me now? Okay, it's, I was listening to some of the things that we've talked about in the meetings on Friday from the Council of Great City Schools. And I guess maybe I might need to say that I'm down to do some comments about that. But it it's interesting to see how in working with that group, which is comprised of seven to six of the largest urban public schools in the states. It's interesting to see how there is a connection between the things that other districts are doing and the things that we are doing here in Jackson. And of course, I would like to get information on that also, Dr. Cormac, because when we meet on Fridays, we meet each Friday at noon. And everybody is talking about the things that are being done in the district and this type of thing, you know? And we're probably the smallest district that's a part of this group, you know, which makes us there special, I think, you know, because we are hanging in there with the big boys and everything. But just want to say thanks very much for a job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Much, much appreciated. I'm sorry, I I missed you. I'm trying to toggle between the gallery view and and some notes that I've got here. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. So again, board members, I do hope that that you see that we're we're well on our way to delivering on these commitments. So much really important, really important work, strategic efforts. It's 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 kind of amazing to think back to call it a year and a half ago, as we were still in the planning stages and what we were trying to envision for our district. And and even back to a year ago when we launched the strategic plan. And up to now, with all that's occurred, even with the this major interruption to our lives, let alone to the instructional programming that we've planned here and have have launched here, to see that we still have some strong data to say that this, these were the right steps in the right strategic priorities. And so just excited to to continue to build on what we've already built upon and and to see the kinds of outcomes that we know our children and families deserve. And speaking of the big interruption that we've experienced, as you know, board members, and and to all those who are listening and paying attention, schools are inherently and intentionally designed for social interaction, that that's they were designed for that. And this COVID-19 pandemic, however, is challenging us all to think and to shift our old mindsets of of how and and where we educate our scholars. Though this health crisis has created an opportunity for innovation, it's also created for us a great deal of fear and uncertainty about the future. And for that reason, we've launched the School Reopening Advisory Committee. And I've mentioned this to you previously, this committee is comprised of representatives of JPS parents and scholars and staff members, some of our local leaders, community partners and others, health officials and others. And while there's no one blueprint, no one blueprint for addressing the ongoing health and safety concerns related to schooling, the advisory committee is tasked with helping us to unearth and to identify the community concerns and needs. Also to make some thoughtful and realistic recommendations for what reopening could look like and should look like. And also helping us to identify some of the resources that are that exist or could exist to help us to reopen our schools for the school year 2021. I'm sure that many of you have seen the guidance and the evolving, I would even say, guidance documents from state and national leaders. And the reality is that many of these documents outline the optimal scenarios that could be accomplished with appropriate funding and with a high level of parent and family flexibilities and support and in in other eyes. Our reality, though, is that we don't have all of the necessary funding to implement the practices that are outlined in those guidance documents. To implement those as well as provide the necessary safeguards and supports that many of our families need, such as childcare. Should we have rolling or varying schedule for for young people? And so the advisory committee will continue to work with with all of those various needs and all of the considerations in mind to help us in in developing our plans as we continue moving forward. You might also be aware, board members, and I know it's been in the news, but just to confirm here, Jackson Public Schools has been allocated approximately or or over $12 million in federal COVID cares funding. And just so you know, as we've been thinking about our priorities and our needs and in the various ways that we can support reopening of schools and operating schools, given the the current kind of conditions. Some of the things that we've prioritized for these funds include, obviously, personal protective equipment for scholars and for for those who are working with our scholars, our team members, sanitizing equipment and supports. And so that's to include some of the foggers and 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 perhaps the UV lights. And we're looking at all sorts of of equipment and and strategies to sanitize and and to address some of the health concerns that exist as we consider bringing folks back together. Technology needs for our scholars and and teachers and staff members, and that's devices, that's connectivity, all of that, which is huge. In fact, we're anticipating that at least half of of our funding could very easily go to those needs there just based on what we know and understand of those needs. Instructional planning and professional development to support virtual learning. We've named this before, but just want to be clear, this isn't something that you just flip a switch. You say you're going virtual, and it happens. There's tons of of planning and support that's required in that. And learning, professional learning that has to happen to ensure that what we deliver to our scholars is is high quality. And and if you if you watch or if you hear from any of the districts, some of the local districts have been what we call one to one, one device per per scholar. And the programming that sits around that, for those who've done that and and have been in that situation prior to this this current crisis, they'll tell you they they took years to to build up to what we're expecting and wanting to see of our of our scholars and our teachers. And so again, to the planning and professional development necessary to to make that to to implement what we what we want to see there. Also, just improving our district's infrastructure in order to operate remotely. And we, as a learning organization, we're already planning to implement more automation in our human resources and in our finance department and and in some other ways. And so this is hastening that that work to ensure that should we have another situation where we have to work remotely, that we don't have to send staff members into the office to move paper or to, you know, to do the some of the essential tasks to to operate the district. And the last one, as a priority that I'll list here, is just the additional physical and mental health services that, you know, should really go without out saying. We we know that there's a huge need to get more support around those services, and so we want to be able to utilize some of the funds for that. We'll continue our planning efforts over the next few weeks and working with the advisory committee. We're re re are bringing the advisory committee back together this coming, or or in two days, actually, to talk through some of the planning that we've done internally and 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 socializing some of those plans and getting some feedback and continuing to sharpen and 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 improve those plans over time with the the committee. We're also planning some panel discussions that we'll do either by Zoom or Facebook Live or both with stakeholder groups just to to continue to get some feedback and and to make sure that we're hearing from our our stakeholders. Our team is also planning to release a survey to to get some reactions to the plans that we're developing before we put a a final stamp on them. We just want to, again, continue to to get the feedback that we need to make sure that those plans are are as informed as as possible. Our plan is to share a final plan of, and by final, it's the plan that we'll launch with. The plan will likely never be final final because we'll continue to iterate and and adjust as we need to over time, but the plan that we'll launch for the for the fall, we want to share that plan during the week of July 13th at the latest. Again, we'll be sharing some initial thinking about and getting some some reactions from from our parents prior to that, but by the week of July 13th, we'll, we should be in a position to share the plan that we'll launch in the fall. And so we want to make sure that folks know that and they're anticipating that and are prepared to engage and to assist us with continued planning individually in terms of families and their homes, but as well with our partners and all of the various pieces that we'll need to keep moving. Board members, are there any questions about what I've shared here? Or reactions? Hearing none, then President Johnson, I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Do we have any participants for a public comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Community members who would like to make a public comment should email their requests to roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 5:15 PM or log into the Zoom meeting between 5:00 and 5:15 to indicate their desire to comment. Next, board members, we are at information items only, and we are on our board member reports. We have two board member reports tonight, Dr. Sebak and Ms. Hilliard, and we will start with Dr. Sebak.
Thank you, Ms. John, Attorney Johnson, and I will be providing an update from the Finance Committee. And again, just want to thank the board for all of its work over the past few weeks and along with Ms. Miller and the finance team from JPS. We've been, like I said, you know, we've been very busy. We had a board, a budget work session on May 27. We also had our public hearing on the budget last week. And then the final date of importance on this process is June 23rd at noon, where the board will meet to ratify the budget, to approve the budget. A couple of just comments on where we are in the budget development process. Again, just a shout out to Ms. Miller and her team, but also the entire JPS team. You know, the this document, the budget, is something that belongs to all of us. It's not something that's just done with the finance team and then given to departments to to implement. And if you look, it's frankly, the decisions that needed to be made in a very difficult year. It took the collective thinking of everyone to get to that place. And we are expecting a decrease in state funding. This is for a couple of reasons. One is we have a reduction in students and enrollment, and that affects our bottom line. We also are anticipating that there will be budget cuts in state funding due to the pandemic. So this is a reality with which we need to respond. And so we are, you know, we will be, the new budget will be leaner. There'll be the elimination of positions based on our optimizing for equity plan. We also, in these positions, will be spread out across the district. There will be, you know, some positions in schools and central office. To be clear, these are not individuals, these are positions. Again, these are positions that will not be filled, that are already vacant or may be vacant by retirements. So I just want to be, these are, you know, this, these are positions that are vacant due to resignations and attrition. So no, no staff members or employee of JPS will be terminated as a as a result of this budget. So we will, so we're also looking at how we use utilities to align our expenditures there with where they, where where we have students and and personnel in buildings. We are going to have a reduction in spending on equipment. We're also going to shift some of our federal resources through the CARES Act towards textbooks as well. And again, going back to my earlier comments about this budget being a document, a framework that belongs to all of us, all departments were asked to identify 15% reduction. So again, something we all are leaning into. We asked the team to be conservative in its estimates. We are anticipating an increase in the charter school payment based on what we've seen in enrollment trends. We are anticipating, um, an increase in the charter school payment based on what we've seen in enrollment trends with charter schools. Um, we also will be, um, funding the teacher step increase. Uh, and also, um, picking up the district's portion of health insurance, which will be another large cost. Along with increases, anticipated increases in liability and property insurance. Um, I guess the last point that I'll make is the budget is balanced. Um, so again, that that's a reflection in these comments around the reductions that we needed to make. We are also, um, recognizing that we do have some, uh, resources in reserve with our fund balance. It, um, allows us not to cut as deeply, uh, this year. We're able to do this, um, while also, um, maintaining a strong balance there for, uh, if there are additional emergencies that occur throughout the year. Um, so Attorney Johnson, that that concludes my report. I would just, before I turn it back over you, just ask Dr. Green or Ms. Miller. A, to correct any mistakes that I made and B, to offer any clarifying remarks that may be necessary, um, or prudent to add.
I think, Dr. Seback, you addressed all of the the pertinent, uh, information as it relates to the budget. And, um, we are, um, finalizing the, um, the actual board order. And it's anticipated that the board, board members, you will have that for review by tomorrow. So that you can have a final look at those numbers and, um, what that whole document looks like. So I do want to, um, express my appreciation to Dr. Seback and also Ms. Ha, uh, Dr. Ms. Hilliard and also Mr. Figures. For their support all throughout the year. Um, this is, um, going to be some ongoing work. Uh, we will have some other very important issues to discuss as we move forward in the financing, uh, process for the year. And, uh, I'm looking forward to it, and I thank you, um, finance team and Dr. Green for the support. And also the, um, the administrative team, they have, they really came through and I appreciate all of their support.
Yeah, just quickly, I I, um, Ms. Miller started to hit on this. I just want to underscore that, um, you know, we 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 sharpen our pencils to to balance the budget for this year. We'll likely need to sharpen them even further. Um, as we, as we get predictions and on funding, um, for for next year. And anticipate further, um, challenges. And so, um, we'll be working over the course of the year to keep looking for, uh, savings. And rethinking how we operate while still providing, uh, level of excellence. Um, understanding that we'll likely need to sharpen our our pencils even further and tighten our belts.
Well, thanks again. And and again, um, there was a lot of positive feedback, uh, from the board. That followed the last work session, particularly, um, Ms. Miller and the way you, um, educated and shared information. On just the decisions that were being made and and, um, and frankly, just how it all fits together. So, um, props and gratitude to you and your team.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seback. Um, Ms. Harrison? I mean, Ms. Hilliard, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. As I said, uh, short while ago, that the the Council of Great City Schools is an organization. That began in nineteen fifty six and the sole purpose of that organization is that it's dedicated. To the improvement of education for children in inner cities. Uh, it's a very interesting organization. I do, um, enjoy the sessions because we get a chance to talk about what is going on in various districts all over. Those that may have enrollment of ninety thousand down to our twenty plus, uh, there. Um. And I'll just touch briefly on on the discussions. Uh, on June fifth, primarily the stuff that a discussion that we were involved with. Had to do with racial equity and whether or not the districts have a racial equity, uh, policy. Uh, if district and we were asked to send a copy of that policy to H A. Uh, who will take that information, H A Crapio, uh, who will take that information and combine it. And we will be able to get a copy of the combined, uh, document. Where we could see how other districts may, uh, deal with this, uh, situation. And of course, we know that, uh, even though we may be satisfied with the policy that we have. We could always, there's always much to learn by seeing what others are doing. Because we can take that information and tweak what we have and perhaps make it better or whatever the case may be. Uh, we heard from basically, uh, individuals from the larger districts. Uh, in individuals who had, uh, experience, um, the racial situations that are going on. Uh, there, so that was, uh, basically what, uh, we did on the fifth, uh, there. And of course, I did submit those policies, uh, policy G A A E and policy G A A F. Which, uh, we got from the, um, the office, uh, there. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, I believe his name was, uh, who, uh, gave us that information. Then, of course, uh, we. The, uh, the next meeting that we had, we talked about that particular meeting. Actually, uh, dealt with school opening. Uh, how do we have the conversation with students about the school opening? And I I I I sent to the other board members. And there may be those of those others of you who may want a copy of this. It's a document that a group has put together that's titled, How to Guide. And this document has the best practices and some of the best thinking and recommendations from districts across the country. And even though, uh, I'm hearing that, you know, our district is pretty much on the way of, uh, on the way to completing. Or to working through that process, uh, again. Oh, with this, and it's the force of the documents that have been, uh, printed. Um. The, this particular document deals with operational issues such as, uh, include facilities, transportation, safety and security. Um, the prior document, this was number four, the prior document. Dealt with, uh, the E L L screening, special education and mental health. Um, these are documents, it's again, that again, I say that can provide some assistance. Perhaps in the process that we are going through. As we prepare for the opening of, uh, schools. So those were basically, and and Dr. Dr. Green, uh, you mentioned something about, you know, the infrastructure. And, um, each time we are given an update on, uh, we're given an update as to what is going on. In government, in, uh, the Senate and all. And one of the things that we did learn at the last meeting is that there is an infrastructure bill. That is, the House has, uh, is is close to introducing an infrastructure bill. That will benefit, uh, schools. So perhaps we'll hear more about that on, uh, Friday. If we hear more about that, uh, on Friday, then we will surprise you of what that bill, uh. What is there in that bill and how, uh, our district can benefit from that particular, uh, bill. Um, these things are being done by senior administrators who oversee various areas here. And, uh, it's it's quite informative session. Uh, I believe that's all, about all I have, uh, if there are questions. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Any other comments, board members? There being none, we will move on with the agenda. Thank you. Um, Dr. Bingham Gibbs?
Good evening. The Office of Exceptional Education Services is presenting for review the collaborative agreement between Mississippi Department of Rehabilitation. Rehabilitative Services and the Jackson Public School District. The Transition Partnership Program is a collaboration between J P S and the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. The purpose of this, um, collaboration is that is so that high school students with disabilities can have a purposeful and successful transition. Into meaningful employment and or post-secondary education.
Um, thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Board members, are there any questions or comments? There being none, thank you. And now we have Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, um, President Johnson, Superintendent Green, other board members. Um, I present to you a brief presentation for the Code of Conduct Book for Information Item for the twenty 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 one school year. Um, with all presentations, we like to make certain that we are, um, sharing our vision and mission for Jackson Public Schools. Because we know that these are our guiding principles. Sorry, I muted myself. Our goal for student, um, conduct, um, the district code of student conduct and handbook serves as a resource. For students and parents. The handbook is designed to guide and support the management, operations and administrations of schools. And this is a particular statement that is taken from the Code of Conduct Book. And it goes right along with our commitment for joyful learning environments. Um, again, you will see our core values, um, and particularly with our Code of Conduct Book. We promote progressive discipline with an emphasis in building relationships and positive respectful culture. Next slide shares our objectives for this evening. Um, we want to explain, um, the process or the revision process for the Code of Conduct Book. Share sample data from the survey that was gathered as well as share specific recommendations for revisions. And to also share our next steps as we, um, complete this project. Understanding that the handbook is a compilation of policies and content that correlates with various policies. Each year we revise and make adjustments as needed to ensure that our policies and our practices align. Um, team members from the offices of Climate and Wellness, Public Engagement, Counseling Services. Work collaboratively to, um, share this project. Our subcommittee members consisted of assistant superintendents, executive directors, members from exceptional education department. School councils, as well as other staff members. Through surveys, discussions and other outlets, stakeholders provided input and shared recommendations for improvement. Considerations of recommendations were taken from committee members, administrators, superintendent. As well as decisions from our due process hearings. And at the end of this revision process, we, um, present a final product to the Board of Trustees for review. The data from the survey. Which you all received, um, with your board material, you receive actual survey responses from various stakeholders. Um, as well as a summary or synthesis of the data. Overall, um, stakeholders were favorable of the format and the content of the book. The vast majority of stakeholders received a copy of the Code of Conduct. They utilized the Code of Conduct Book for the following, reviewing attendance guidelines, dress code. Consequences for discipline and other general information. Um, specific recommendations for revisions were shared and a few of them are included on this particular slide. So with this particular slide, um, stakeholders commented that fewer copies could be printed to assist with our fiscal responsibility. Uh, many received multiple copies of the Code of Conduct Book due to, um, students, um, in different schools. Or their children attended different schools. Uh, vaping, the use of electronic cigarettes is on the rise and therefore, um, needs to be included in the Code of Conduct Book. So it was included in the area with tobacco infraction. Um, it was also suggested that we remove multiple steps from infractions to provide clarity for consequences. Um, as stated previously, we utilize the results of decisions from our due process hearing. To determine the appropriate consequences and to limit the options. Um, the high school assistant superintendent and director of counseling services reviewed sections for graduation requirements. And noted the necessary changes. Due to COVID nineteen, virtual learning has become one of our norms. And so, um, it was recommended by our superintendent that a statement be included within the Code of Conduct Book. And so the the department worked together to formulate the statement that has been included for this year. Also stakeholders commented that the online copy is simply a PDF version that requires strolling from page to page. So it was suggested that the links are created for the various sections to eliminate, um, staff members and, um, parents from having to go from page to page. Next. Based on the recommendations, um, our next steps, the instructional technology department, as well as public engagement team. Will work collaboratively to fulfill the request and make the online document more user friendly. Schools will receive a percentage of printed handbooks, um, hard copies will be made available upon parents' request. And, um, printing and distribution of books to schools will be completed, um, prior to the end of July and far before, um, the beginning of the school year. In closing. Um, I would like to share a message, um, from our superintendent is actually an excerpt from the letter that is provided. This student Code of Conduct and Handbook informs scholars and parents, guardians of our expectations and practices. It provides guidance for student interactions and is grounded in the district's core values of equity. Excellence, relationships, growth mindset, relevance and a positive and respectful culture. We encourage all Jackson Public Schools families to review this guidance and to do your individual part in making Jackson Public Schools great. Regardless of whether we're engaging with one another virtually or in person. That concludes the review of the Code of Conduct Book. Any questions?
Any comments or questions, board members?
Just a very brief comment. Um, I know the Code of Conduct was something that this board has been interested in since we were first seated. And we're very pleased to see the, uh, additions and corrections and enhancements. That, uh, you have provided, uh, Dr. Thomas and your team. And I really appreciated reading the, uh, data and feedback from staff and parents. And to see how that feedback has been integrated into your current work and future work. So just appreciate it. It's looking very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, as a parent, I want to agree with the parents that I said, it's easy to read and locate information. It really is. So, thank you for that. Any other?
First of all, um, Dr. Thomas, thank you for taking the time to synthesize the data for us in the survey. Um, I had, it was going through it. I have one question. It looked like, um, we had fairly consistent responses from elementary and high school students. But only ten percent of the responses were from middle school students, parents. Um, and so to what do you, um, attribute those trends? And, uh, what can we do to try to get more uniform response across the board?
That is actually a sample of the data. I do want to state that, uh, and so basically a parent group was selected. Um, which just may not have been, um, the same amount for elementary and high school. So there were probably more parents, um, within this group that were, that had students who attended high school. And I will be very honest with you, typically a lot of our infractions and, um, consequences that are issued are within the high school realm. So we're very interested in what they were thinking and. and, and their suggestions as far as that, um, the group was pretty much, it consisted of parents, um, counselors. Some of them had dual um, responsibilities as related to, um, the students and, and their comments. Um, some were retired members. So it just depended on whether or not they had grandchildren that were in elementary or high school or, or students on that level. But, um, I can dig a little deeper and get some more responses from middle school parents.
And we can, and we can certainly recommit to ensuring that we've got the representative group, that we've got a, a good proportion of parents from across, because we definitely want to make sure that if there are any, um, uh, anomalies or, or, um, peculiarities to the experience in middle school, that it, it's borne out in the, the data as well. So.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
I'll just, just lastly, want to, uh, publicly thank Ms. Thomas and the work of the committee to, um, to continue to, uh, raise and elevate the, the, um, level of excellence of this, this handbook. We don't want it to simply be something that people get and put on their shoulder, on their shelves, or never access it online. We do want folks to, uh, reference it, to be informed, and, um, while we understand that sometimes, uh, it's, it's a challenge to, uh, for school leaders to feel like their, their hands are tied, the, the, um, uh, with too much, um, or too many restrictions and limitations on how they can react to certain issues based on the context. We also know that it's a challenge to have too many, uh, options, uh, as it pertains to the infractions and, and, and consequences for those infractions. And so, uh, really pleased to see us, uh, streamlining that a bit and being clearer on what is likely to happen as a response, as well as all the work that we do on the front end to keep folks from making bad choices. So, again, kudos, Ms. Thomas. Thank you for this work. Excited to move, move this forward.
Thank you. Green, um, now we have Mr. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Jo, I'm sorry. President Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the board. I'm bringing before you the review of the agreement between Sanders Quality Testing and the Jackson Public Schools District. Uh, Mr. Sanders is a certified commercial driver's license trainer. He's been with the district since two thousand seventeen and eighteen, eighteen. Uh, he started, he's, he's been assisting us with our new employees mainly, making sure that they're certified and making sure that they know how to operate a bus. He does not allow them to drive if they cannot operate a bus. Uh, if you may remember, back in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, and two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, the Transportation Department received a Rising Star Award because of his training, where our accidents were down. Uh, we were actually looking forward to another Rising Star Award this year, but of course, because of the COVID, we didn't have that to go. So we want to try to get him again this year because he's good at what he does and making sure that our, our drivers are certified proper.
Thank you. Um, board members, are there any questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Williams, I did have, I just want you to talk a little bit about, um, the relationship between these certifications and student attendance.
Student attendance?
Yes, and the report had said that in terms of student outcomes, um, that the certification.
Okay, it's showing that, uh, you're talking about how many miles we travel a day and the number of routes that we have?
Um, in terms of making sure children are in the building, coming to school, attending school?
Correct. With Mr. Sanders, this would help us to get drivers certified, uh, so to put them on buses where we're short of drivers. This will help us to get them certified, so we'll have a driver assigned to every route. And he's, he's adamant about making sure that he's helping us with this. You know, he goes above and beyond to make sure. And this past school year, our attendance was much better. And the year before, it, it's like it improves every year with Mr. Sanders because he just wants to make sure that they're doing what we're, they're supposed to do.
Thank you. That's exactly what I need to know.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? If not, we're ready for Chief Jones.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Green, and members of the board. The administration is recommending the renewal of an existing agreement between the Jackson Police Department and the Jackson Public School District Office of Campus Enforcement. Uh, this agreement is to provide officers to assistance, providing a safe and secure environment for athletic events. Uh, these events include our basketball games, football games. Uh, last year, they assisted us with our, uh, graduation ceremonies, and they are also available if we have a need for any other assistance during the school year. Now, we've had a relationship, a written agreement with the Jackson Police Department for the last seventeen years and have been providing assistance for over twenty-two years with our athletic events and our other events in the, uh, school district. It's been a very positive experience, in fact, of late. Uh, based on recommendations from the superintendent, others, we've really strengthened our relationships with the Jackson Police Department in terms of not just on the administrative level, but encouraging, uh, some points of convergence with the officers themselves, working at events so that they can actually have some uh, shared experiences and shared information even beyond just the games. And we recognize what we think to be an appreciable decrease, uh, in the, uh, number of incidents that required a police interaction at our athletic event. So we're recommending that we renew this agreement. The total that we're looking at expending is no more than a hundred and five thousand dollars for this year, starting in September.
Thank you, Chief Jones. Um, board members, are there any questions or comments?
President Johnson, I just have, uh, one comment to, uh, Chief Jones. We thank him for this partnership. And, uh, I encourage Chief Jones and his staff and Dr. Green and our team to be sure to find a way that, um, the officers who do participate with us at our events are able to recognize those students who might be walking freely, helping a teacher, going through a different gate, unpacking a refreshments or whatever out of a teacher's, uh, car at the teacher's instructions. So there won't be mix-ups because we, we do like our students to take leadership and to think on their feet and, and participate. And, but we don't want them to ever be perceived, uh, out of line in any way. So we, we've talked about, I don't know how we make that happen, but we would hate to have any kind of incident just because of a very, very minor misunderstanding between the adults and the young folk. So thank you for your, your work and, and hope you can keep that in the back of your mind as you all continue to support us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam President. Madam President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Figures.
Uh, I had, uh, only, uh, email comments. I had shared a couple of, uh, concerns regarding the relationship between the Jackson, uh, Police Department and Campus Enforcement. And they were concerns around, uh, kind of piggybacked on what Dr. Sevak and Dr. Luckett had mentioned in their comments. Uh, but they were around training, uh, in the area of crisis intervention and de-escalation of situations, uh, of these, uh, additional offices. But that also led me to, uh, think about, uh, the entire relationship of campus enforcement and the training in de-escalation and crisis intervention that they have. And does that necessitate, uh, a review of the contracts, uh, even for the billing services of these, uh, of these officers, including our, uh, own campus enforcement? That, that may be a broad question for another kind of, uh, session, you know? But I just wanted to get it, I did submit it in writing, and I just wanted to get it out in the open.
I, I will try to answer that question for you, Mr. Figures, the best I can. Uh, we actually train with the Jackson Police Department. Uh, once a month, we have trained with the Crisis Intervention Team. We have Crisis Intervention Team members who train with them jointly, uh, in a collaborative way. Uh, we also have our Crisis Intervention instructors here. Some years ago, the Jackson Public School District, by means of a grant, was able to provide CPI training or non-violent crisis intervention training to members of the Jackson Police Department. We also have the Region Eight Mental Health, uh, group who sponsors the Crisis Intervention Team. And the main focus of that team is making sure that, uh, the officers who are responding are responding in appropriate manner based on the situation at hand. We have at least four officers who are members of their Crisis Intervention Team, and we work collaboratively with the Jackson Police Department, especially at our athletic events or any events. Uh, what we find now is, uh, if there is an event or there's a situation at a school, we rely heavily on the administration or the administrators at the field to handle those situations. Every game, the administrator is identified who is the field administrator. And if in fact, there is a situation, we defer to them and provide that information to them so that they can take appropriate administrative action with the child. Uh, one of the things that we say, Mr. Figures, is we don't add an adult value to a child's actions. So we make sure that our reactions and responses are appropriate to the actions and conduct of the child, given their age and given the situation. So we have unique opportunity because we do best what we do most. That's what we do all day, every day, is work with our young people and work with the building administrators. And by developing a relationship, a close working relationship with the Jackson Police Department, we're able to work together at the fields and at athletic events or in the buildings when these situations occur. So it's a joint effort, if I'm answering your question.
And I think you are, especially when you mention this term that I'm almost going, uh, the uniqueness of the opportunity uh, is going to open the door for even, you know, something that may be even more intense than we already do. I, I really appreciate that, uh, officer. I really appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Figures, I'll, I'll just add to that, um, quickly. Um, what I've, what I've heard and what I've seen of, uh, of the Jackson, uh, community, that's internal, uh, team members, um, perhaps of our scholars, certainly of parents and others. There's a, there are competing, um, uh, maybe not priorities, but competing expectations as to the role of our security officers, our, our, uh, campus enforcement, our, our sworn officers. Um, and so we, we're, we, we have, I think, continued work to do to, kind of, raise and build consensus around the kinds of relationships that we want our officers to have with school leaders, with our teachers, and with our scholars and parents. Um, far more of the, um, proactive, uh, efforts, relationship building, gathering information, being visible, and just all those things that we can do to clarify expectations on the front end so that we have less of the bad decision-making and, and, uh, bad behaviors, disruptive behaviors, um, on the back end. Um, but, but it, just to name, there, there's a range of, kind of, uh, feelings and beliefs and opinions around uh, how hands-on and heavy-handed police should be in order to eradicate some of the things that we sometimes see in schools and sometimes in our schools. And so that's work that, just to name it, that we've got to continue to do so that we've got a collective, um, view of, of what that relationship could be and still ensure that we've got the level of safety and respect um, and justice that we, we want to see in our schools. Um, uh, I, I am, I am certainly heartened in what I've seen of our, uh, campus enforcement, uh, in the way that they, uh, engage with young people, uh, day-to-day and with our, um, our, um, parents and with our, our staff members. Um, and that's certainly the expectation. Um, and there is a little tolerance of foolishness that, um, some of the things that we've seen in the news. And so, um, I've certainly seen our folks behaving in professional ways, and we want to continue that and continue to build the kinds of relationships, um, with our young people and ensuring that even in partnership with the Sheriff's Department and with the Jackson Public, Jackson Police Department, that, that all of the adults are treating our young people in these kinds of respectful ways and just ways, um, so that, that we are safe and we feel safe uh, and even they've, uh, as it pertains to our, our police.
Chief Jones, I also, um, had a question. And I, I understand that this is all relatively new, but in light of everything that's gone around in, um, in the country and, um, the protesting around the world, I just wanted to know what your thoughts were for students coming back into buildings, um, with them all having their own opinions about the things that are going on and how they're affected by it. Um, how you see the relationship between campus enforcement and students being different going forward?
I think we, uh, with campus enforcement, again, we have a unique opportunity because we are there with the students every day, building those relationships prior to, uh, in a situation getting to that point escalating, and they certainly have questions, uh, as young people do. So we encourage our officers to be very professional in answering those questions. And, uh, because they have concerns, they have fears, they have doubts, as young people do, all people do. So we're taking the time to, uh, to answer those questions. We have other programs. We have the only Police Explorers Chapter in Central Mississippi. Right now, we're using that as a means of encouraging individuals to get to know who we are, uh, getting the young people introduced to, uh, various aspects of law enforcement from a positive aspect. Uh, we have the, uh, for our younger children, we have the McGruff Program. There's a very robust program that we introduce, have introduced to our, uh, uh, pre-K or kindergarten and our first and fifth graders. And then we have our Eddie Eagle Program that we rolled out as well. And then for the, uh, middle school children, high school, we have a program that we're working with through the US Attorney's Office that actually helps them in decision-making. So to answer your question, ma'am, is being positive, uh, approachable, that's the other thing. Uh, officers have to be, and we hear this, this phrase, community policing, which to me is a lot of the guiding action. For us, we are part of the school community. So that means we are part of their day in a non-intrusive fashion, in a positive manner. Uh, we want them to be able to approach the officer. We want them, uh, to be able to ask questions, share with them things that, uh, has happened to them and in their lives. So to answer your question, it's the same matter, just making sure that we're a part of their day in a positive way and encouraging them to approach us.
Thank you. I appreciate your thoughtfulness around this. Board members, are there any other? Oh, Dr. Green?
I'm sorry, I failed to say this earlier, uh, but we've already, um, begun to some initial conversation amongst the, uh, instructional, the academic leadership team around, um, just the curriculum. And, and, you know, whether it's through history or writing around, um, critical thinking and, and some of the current so, social issues of the day, content, uh, texts that we're reading, articles, books, et cetera, all of those sorts of things that'll help to, uh, develop young minds in positive ways around these issues and, and processing their own feelings, beliefs, opinions around them and, uh, channeling some of the, um, some of those emotions and feelings around them uh, in further developing their academic skills such that as they develop, um, into young adults, they're, um, they're better prepared to engage in the public discourse around, you know, what the policies could and should be. You know, how any of this really matters and plays out in our day-to-day lives. So I meant to mention that as well. That's, um, and that's, that's, you know, earlier work. We, we have such rich, rich history here in the state and in the city. Um, and so lots of opportunity for us to build, um, and, and develop more fully, um, these, what we'll call critical literacies.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, madam, uh, I hate to just keep going on, but I want to thank, uh, Dr. Green for further elaborating on that. And what I believe is embedded in, uh, what, uh, he just commented about was, uh, traumatic as well as health and wellness, uh, of children. of children and the adults that's going to be working with children and young people and the public in general skills on, you know, how to mitigate, you know, in that area. I thank you very much, doctor.
And I would just jump in here really quickly and appreciate all of the work that Chief Jones and his team does, and just want to make sure that we are modeling as best we can, best practices around all of these issues, especially in terms of racial and social justice. And I do think, long-term, we need to think about our budgets. We need to think about how we model that in our actions in our schools and, you know, how we work to reduce police force in our schools and how we can.
Yes.
And I would say here too, and this is just as a point of pride for us as a district, the largest civil rights protest in Mississippi since the 1960s was organized by one of our recent grads from JPS, and we should be very proud of her and the work our school district has done to raise young people like that who can lead in our city and our state and nation. And so I would just say Maisy Brown's name out here as a real point of pride. I was, it was amazing to be there and to watch her lead.
I would, I would agree. And it's hard to come with a question after that, Robbie. I would have gone in front of you. The question I've got is, can you maybe this is Chief Jones and Ms. Thomas, you know, oftentimes these conversations are broader than just a public safety incident or looking at discipline or infractions. And so I know part of the larger conversation is access to resources around mental health and counsel. And I know the counselor, I think the counselors roll up to Ms. Thomas. If I'm wrong on that, please correct me. So maybe Chief Jones and Ms. Thomas, can you talk about how your offices work or communicate again so that we're getting ahead of any instance that may occur, using all of our assets to position our children to succeed?
I'll start. We actually have lines of communication to include our tip line that is made 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so that our scholars, if they have a concern or a question, that they want to share that, that they can do that anonymously, we then share that information with the appropriate school-level personnel so that they can take appropriate proactive measures in events that is needed. The other thing is if there is an infraction or an incident at the school, we involve the administrators, and then they are the discipline areas. We are simply there as a support for them because they are the professionals as it relates to early childhood or childhood development. So we rely heavily on them to assist us in terms of whatever the situation may be developing. Again, I'll mention this at the games. If there is a situation at a game, we refer them to the building or, I'm so sorry, the school administrator or the field administrator for the appropriate action. So therein lies the collaboration. If there's a report to be done, we be sure that with the building level administrators so that they can take the appropriate action to get them the appropriate assistance that that scholar may need.
After, of course, sharing with the building administrator, if it's something that has to come to the Office of Climate and Wellness, then we always have an open line of communication with Chief Jones as well as his deputy chief or either the security officers. But as you stated, Dr. Sevak, yes, the counselors, any type of behavior infraction, and like I said, we want to be deal with progressive disciplines so that we're not just being reactive but being proactive. So we try to make certain that we're giving those levels of supports before it gets to an incident where Chief Jones or his security officers have to take action in that. But just to answer your question, we do have a very open line of communication. When we have issues, even if we want to just check on children's or staff members, I've been able to reach out to campus enforcement for that support.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Chief Jones.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now we are moving on to information action items. Ms. Miller, item A.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Dr. Green, members of the board. I present to you the approval to award bid number 3130 for the Capital City Alternative School Site Drainage and Foundation Repair to Mayran and Associates of Jackson. This is a bond issue project that will help with the, will actually eliminate the water drainage issues that are occurring at Capital City Alternative School. This was advertised and of course was one of the projects that was included in the bid in the bond project for 2018, and we are recommending this for approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve information action item 8A.
Is that second?
Second.
Ms. Dr. Harrison has moved and Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Now we have Dr. Holland with items B and C.
Good evening, Madam President, other board members, Superintendent Green. You have received recommendations for district-to-district transfers for those students who will be transferring from JPS and those who will be transferring to JPS.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Holland. Now we will take
We need a motion, Madam President.
I was going to take B through D together.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's fine. Ms. Mason?
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Administration is recommending approval of the agreement with T-Mobile Wireless Solutions to purchase 62 hotspot devices for students to provide internet access at home so that they can use their devices at home for school.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? All right, is there a motion for action, information actions items B through D?
I would move, Madam President, that we approve information action items B through D.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you. Now, board members, we are the consent agenda items finance. All of the consent agenda items finance have been reviewed by the board previously, either brought before us for information only or in other presentations. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move, was it the move that we will adopt consent agenda items A through E.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Sevak has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now we are on consent agenda items general. All of the consent agenda items general have been presented to the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions. Are there any further questions, board members? If not, is there a motion?
That we adopt consent agenda items general for approval?
A second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now we have consent agenda items personnel. We've also had an opportunity to review this previously. Board members, are there any additional questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items personnel?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved and Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there consideration to hold executive session?
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I am not speaking to hold an executive session. I have a question, but I didn't want, for Dr. Karmak, but I didn't want you to adjourn before I could ask my question.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Karmak? Is Dr. Karmak still on?
I am.
We have a policy review committee scheduled for tomorrow at 10:30 in the morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have documents that we should have received?
Yes, they were attached to the original calendar invite, but the meeting has been shifted, so I can resend those, but they were part of the original invite and it's been shifted several times. So we'll coordinate with Ms. Williams to ensure that you have the documents needed. But if you recall, you and I interface them over email with those corresponding documents. So those will be the same that were attached to the original.
But that's my problem. That first Zoom email that I received on June 4th, I didn't find the attachment.
Okay, so I'll make sure that you receive them this evening.
Thank you so much.
They were attached.
Thank you, Dr. Karmak. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, President Johnson.
No problem, Dr. Harrison. Is there, so there is no consideration for executive session? So is there a motion? Okay, thank you. Attorney Turner. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Dr. Harrison has moved that we adjourn. Mrs. Dr. Sevak has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There being no nays, this motion is approved and this meeting is adjourned. Good evening. Have a nice one.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
You too.